What's wrong with this? Could the Montana family, please, come up to the table?
While they're approaching, would you like me to read the resolution?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment before we come up. Last council meeting, I introduced this resolution declaring today Big Chief Tootie Montana Day. He was indeed the prettiest, the most beautiful, and we are pleased to have with him, with us today, his son, Darryl Montana, who has done a phenomenal job. If you've not had a chance to see some of his work, you know that he has carried on for his dad. We have his wife, Joyce, and I'm gonna let my sister, Ms. Sabrina Mays Montana, who Sabrina and I grew up together, we, she's a lot younger than I am. She actually was a little kid when I was a teenager. So, I don't want y'all, Darryl, I don't want you to think you're married to a woman. So, you know. She was much younger than I am. And we met up again in college, when I was going back to college after having two kids and stuff. But what I want you to know is that it is with great pleasure that this city council honors a great man. And we're gonna take a minute before you do your presentation to read the resolution, because you were not here when we did the resolution. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. We have Resolution R 11572 by Councilmember Hedges Morrell, and it was seconded by Councilmember Clarkson. It states, "Whereas on January 8th, 2009, the council resolved and proclaimed that the first day of Carnival/Mardi Gras season 2009 and every year thereafter shall be designated as Allison Big Chief Tootie Montana Day. And whereas the council wishes to reaffirm its resolution, and whereas Allison Big Chief Tootie Montana mourned on December 16th, 1922, began his journey into the tradition of masking as a Mardi Gras Indian at the age of seven. In his early teens, he dressed as a skeleton, and in 1947, at the age of 25, he committed his life to the tradition. And whereas Big Chief Tootie Montana personified both the richness and complexity of the New Orleans Mardi Gras Indian tradition with a Mardi Gras Indian heritage that stretched back through several generations. And whereas Allison Big Chief Tootie Montana's Mardi Gras Indian heritage began with its, his great-grandmother's brother, B. Cat Baptiste, the legendary founding big chief of the Creole Wild West in the late 1800s, the first Mardi Gras Indian tribe to hit the streets of New Orleans. And whereas Allison Big Chief Tootie Montana's connection to the Mardi Gras Indian culture began with his father, Alfred Montana, who masked with the Creole Wild West and later became big chief of the Eighth Ward Hunters and the Yellow Pocahontas Mardi Gras Indian Tribes. And whereas Allison Big Chief Tootie Montana was the oldest continuously masking Mardi Gras Indian in the city of New Orleans, masking for 40 years from 1947 until 1986, resuming in 1988. And whereas Allison Big Chief Tootie Montana continued to mask as chief of the Yellow Pocahontas Mardi Gras Indian Tribe until 1997, masking again in 1999 and again in 2004, when he made his last suit. And whereas Allison Big Chief Tootie Montana's 50th year was celebrated with an exhibit, "He's the Prettiest," a tribute to Big Chief Allison Tootie Montana's 50 years of Mardi Gras Indian suiting at the New Orleans Museum of Art. And whereas Allison Big Chief Tootie Montana was a major innovator in suit design and developed the full-length trail crown that spread out horizontally from side to side instead of vertically behind the chief, using abstract geometric three-dimensional figures in addition to representational designs. And whereas Allison Big Chief Tootie Montana made major contributions in moving the Mardi Gras Indians away from physical violence to aesthetic competition, a battle of needle and thread. And whereas Allison Big Chief Tootie Montana, at the age of 16, began an apprenticeship in the construction lathing trade, which frames everything in preparation for the plastering work. And whereas Allison Big Chief Tootie Montana, known as a master latherer, framed some of New Orleans historic buildings, the La Pavillon and its historic medallions, the Monteleone Hotel, and the former Rivagate, to name a few. And whereas Allison Big Chief Tootie Montana was featured in the Raise to the Trade: Creole Building Arts of New Orleans at the New Orleans Museum of Art. And whereas Allison Big Chief Tootie Montana retired in 1987 after nearly 50 years, completed the journey of master craftsman, credits his trade that gave him the insight to what would become his legacy, creating Mardi Gras Indian suits. And whereas Allison Big Chief Tootie Montana, on June 27, 2005, speaking of his 52-year involvement with the Mardi Gras Indian tradition, spoke before the New Orleans City Council's special session, held to review historic and recent complaints of police misconduct during Mardi Gras, collapsed and died of a fatal heart attack. And whereas Allison Big Chief Tootie Montana was surrounded by Mardi Gras Indian chiefs, members of their tribes, family, and supporters. And whereas Allison Big Chief Tootie Montana was recognized as the chief of chiefs. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of New Orleans that January 6, 2005, the first day of the Carnival/Mardi Gras season, is declared the Allison Big Chief Tootie Montana Day in the city of New Orleans. Be it further resolved by the council of the city of New Orleans that a proclamation be issued yearly citing the first day of Mardi Gras as Allison Big Chief Tootie Montana Day in the city of New Orleans. And this motion was adopted and approved by all seven members of the city council.
At this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Sabrina, so that she can introduce everyone at the table, and Darryl, so they can talk to us about the prettiest of them all. Thank you.
I'm gonna start with the elders first. Ms. Joyce Montana, Tootie's wife, and my mother-in-law. Ms. Madeline Lester, Tootie's sister. Denise Montana Stevenson, his daughter. David Montana, his nephew. Darryl Montana, my husband. And Tootie's queen, Gina Montana. Ms. Joyce, I'm gonna let you s-
Well, I just would like to thank all of you for having us over today.
Ms. Montana, we can't hear you as well as we'd like. Maybe you could move the microphone, your microphone, so we can hear you better? Yes, ma'am, we wanna hear you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That's much better.
I would just like to say I thank the city council and everybody for having us over today. And as you know, Tootie masked for 52 years, and that was the light of his life. He loved masking. And I'm so glad that the city and everybody else recognizing the work that he put into it. When he died, I said, "Well, I can't grieve, because he died doing what he loved best." And he helped teach a lot of young people the art of making Mardi Gras Indian suits. And if they were like he was, this would give them something to do to keep them from getting in trouble. Because if you sew and make Indian suits, you don't have time for anything else. So, I hope his legacy lives on, which they have a lot of young people that's into the Mardi Gras Indian tradition. And I just hope they do well in keeping the tradition going.
Hello. I just wanna say this is an honor for me to be here for my brother, Tootie. He's very much missing, and I don't think there will ever be anybody else like Tootie Montana. His artwork and everything was just beautiful. He is so missing. He was proud. When he got on a carnival morning, when he stepped outside and got and stayed in the door, come out of his house, he felt like a king. And he looked like one. And he's very, very, very much missing. And it's just an honor to be here, that's all, to celebrate.
I am proud to be the daughter of Big Chief Allison Tootie Montana. And as my mother said, I'd like to reiterate that she, he did mask for 52 years. I'm 55. And to see that he's being honored and that his legacy is living on, because it's so well-deserving. Because for the 52 years that he masked, as I can remember, as a small child, he worked tirelessly at night, stayed up, missed a whole lot of rest. And before he retired from this tradition, he felt that he was no longer doing it for himself, but he was doing it for the people. That's the way he always put it. He said, "I'm doing it for the citizens of New Orleans." And just to know that everybody's appreciating him and that his legacy is living on, it makes me feel good. But every time I walk in this chamber, I want y'all to know I'm very, very emotional.
Yeah, I'm Second Chief David Montana, the son of Edward Montana, Tootie's brother. And I'm just so happy to know that the city is recognizing the art that comes from these people from all over, from all over the city, the Indians that come out. And it's so appreciated to see that, you know, this city stands behind something that's been here, that he never left. Everything left, Kraus, McCourys, everything left this city, you know, all the different places that, I'm 58 years old, so I know a lot of places that's been here and gone. And it's just an honor for me to help pick up my part of the banner, to keep it going the way it's going. And I just thank y'all for recognizing us, and we won't let y'all down. We'll keep the city pretty for Mardi Gras, because we know people coming from all around the world to see us too. And it's just an honor for us to be part of the city, you know. So, thank you for acknowledging my uncle and giving him a day for himself. I appreciate that.
Last night, my wife had gotten on the computer, and she showed me a picture of my father. And we looked at the design. Now, I believe I do pretty good with what I do, but when I saw his work, again, it blew up my mind, you know. So, when I got up this morning, I said, "Let me see exactly how many days he spent working on the suit." I came up with 19,710 days of his life. Now, I'm not talking about when he was a child, I'm talking about as a man, because he masked when he was a kid too. But for a person to give up that much of their life for the city, because he, you know, he would always say that, "The first 10 years, I did it for this guy." And I find that I'm the same way. The first 10 years, I really, really wanted to do it, but then after a while, you find that it's about the community, it's about the city. A young man that masked with me, he said, "He said, 'Chief, he said, you really don't belong to you, you belong to the city.'" So, you got to, you know, and it's a hell of a position to be put in, to know that a culture stands on your shoulders. So, my daddy, I'm glad that he has finally gotten his wings. We've gotten our wings as a tradition. I also feel that with the statue that was put in Congo Square, somebody had to be put on the point, as far as doing a statue. I really don't believe there's nobody I've ever met in a tradition deserves it, or deserved it more than Tootie Montana. So, having said that, I look at this statue as being the validation for what we do in our city as Mardi Gras Indians. We finally, we finally got our wings. And I wanna thank all of you for giving us the time to do our presentation, but also for honoring my father, who put his, basically, his whole life into something. And that's big.
Good morning, everyone, and thank y'all so very much, the city of New Orleans and the council members, for honoring my big chief, Allison Tootie Montana, who's also my cousin. But for Mrs. Joyce and Big Chief Tootie, they was more like a mom and a dad to me as well, with all due respect to my parents. They really took me under their wings and taught me. And that was, I think, one of chief's most lasting legacies. As much as we love to see his role as a Mardi Gras Indian, as an artist, as an architectural master, but he taught countless members of our community how to sew, how to mask, and how to be respectful to each other. Tootie was a man of peace, and he really, really was the leader who took anything remotely violent away from the culture and put the emphasis on the talent, the creativity, and the skill that all of us have. He was a walking monument and testament to the legacy and the history of New Orleans. I just wanted to say also, when he tragically had the heart attack here in the city council chambers, that Tootie was standing up and asking the city to respect us when we are on the street. We do not have set routes on traditional days such as St. Joseph's Night or Mardi Gras Day. We only have a set route on the Super Sunday parades. And to allow the tradition to continue in its authentic form, where we do not have to put in paperwork or request a permit to have our unspecified route, is basically where the big chief wanna go, is where we go. And to trust us, just as much as we trust the elected officials and the leadership of New Orleans, that you all will, in turn, trust us, that we will adhere to public safety rules and will not put each other or the tribe in danger as we're walking in the street and through traffic. And it actually, I've been in the tribe, in my suit, when the sirens come up on us, and it creates more of a panic and pandemonium with the second liners in the tribe, whereas, you know, we do take a lot of consideration in making sure everyone is safe when we walk, and we appreciate NOPD in the city, you know, to be ever so vigilant, to allow the tradition to continue in its authentic form. Thank y'all very much. And I can't wait to see you.
Well done. Having said that-
I wanna thank you to the entire city council and to my sister, who feels what we feel as it relates to the culture and the tradition of masking as a Mardi Gras Indian in the city of New Orleans. Today is not just a day about Tootie Montana, but it's about an indigenous New Orleans culture, the traditional practices that began in the 1800s in that old picture from his family, from a man named DK Baptiste in the 1800s. But there were slaves that were forbidden to wear feathers back in the 1700s. So, this is, this is a celebration of two peoples, the natives and the slaves, that found a common bond and grew from it. As a community, a collective community, made up of diverse people, there is no other place like New Orleans in this entire universe. And we have something special that other cities don't have. And that's what we bring, the individuality that we bring, to make New Orleans not a gumbo, but a salad of mixtures of different ingredients. And that's what makes us special and unique to the people that visit us and have them to come back, because we are who we are. But this tradition of masking, from second lining, baby dolls, skeletons, brass bands, these are all of African descent. And it brings with it a spirit that began in the roots of Congo Square. So, we come to you, we come to you in the most respect, that this city come together collectively with the groups that makes the culture of New Orleans what it is, to find some commonality, to ensure that it is respected, it is treated with dignity, and that you provide opportunities for economic development for the people who practice and engage in this culture without commercialities in it. My father-in-law was a man of his word, much integrity, and I'm speaking to the chiefs. His role as chief was defined in how he carried himself, and he knew that how he carried himself impacted them and the whole tribe. So, I ask that when we continue this day for generations to come, because there will be a continuation of the Allison Montana Day, the first day of Carnival, as we say in our community, that we use this day as a day of teaching, as a day of sharing, as a day of celebrating who we are, whose we are, why we do what we do, the way we do it, but to recommit ourselves, to do it with dignity, to teach our history to our tribes, and to make sure that we pass it on, but we pass it on in its authentic truth. That's, this is our responsibility. This is our responsibility. So, on behalf of the family and the community, I say thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Sabrina, can I say something, please? Yes. All, there's a lady in the photo who calls her Aunt Sue, standing next to Tootie.
Jerome, go to the mic so everybody can hear you.
Masked Queen with the chief. But outside of the needle and thread and the costumes, we had conversations when I was a boy. And one of the problems we are embracing present day has to do with the fact that there's a new de-lynching of the black child, and the lynching is not being done by him, even though our children pull triggers. But there is another lynching. They're not considered in the real world of economic opportunities in the city. We cannot have a part-time jobs program for young people who just want basic creature needs. We spoke earlier about the football team designing a t-shirt, which has value. But many of the kids I know would not be able to buy the t-shirt, because they do not have jobs, because the city has not considered them, and it's new money day. So, we need to peep at that a little bit now. On December 16, this is a photo of children from Tambourine and Fan who use Armstrong Park as a classroom. And they went to chiefs and Louis Armstrongs and Mahalia Jacksons, and we dealt with that because there's an overregimentation of education deliverance in the city. And if you are overregimented, then you compromise the learning experience. So, we took about 100 children to Armstrong Park. Armstrong Park should be seen as a classroom, definitely seen as a classroom. Educators should come together and come speak to us, because we are doing this. A child go to see Armstrong, Mahalia Jackson, Sidney Boucher, the Congo Square, and just say, "Look, what they have all in common. They have a determination of doing good, a determination of doing good, which is consistent with the great music of our city, which is saying, 'Good morning and good evening.'" "Good morning and good evening" is a synonym for caring. Caring, caring mandates a respect for the other's humanity. And so, if we gonna deal with trying to curb those negatives, and black children do not learn to shoot at themselves from their parents, that is the American tradition. We applaud John Wayne and Bush and et cetera, but the point is, the killing did not start on the street, they started being killed first. And so, the deal is, we have a big job to do here. One of the things chief told me as a boy, I would like not his crown. He wanted youngsters to get involved in his trade. He wanted them to get involved in that trade, so they could have jobs to finance their costumes. They don't have that now. And so, we need to look at this again. Armstrong Park should be advocated as a classroom, as an extension of the educational experience. And one of the things that's missing, we have to deal with the New Orleans spirit. I was punished as a boy if I didn't say, "Good morning and good evening." As simple as that sound, that's like prayer. See, the undertones of that word says, "I care about myself and the other." And if that be the case, we can reduce, we can reduce the negatives on the street.
Thank you, Jerome. Darryl?
Good evening, each and every one of you all. But we got to go back to 2005.
Could you introduce yourself? Everybody knows Jerome.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Bertrean Butler. We have to go back to 2005 and think about why chief, legendary chief, Tootie Allison Montana. He was here because the way the New Orleans Police Department and all the police district were treating the New Orleans Mardi Gras Indians since he was a kid, and before his time, he was standing up here explaining his views concerning the treatment of the New Orleans Mardi Gras, I mean, the New Orleans Police Department. He was saying, he seen varieties of ways the police was misconduct in itself when it came to the culture of the Indians. We asked several times for a meeting with the city council members, and we definitely want to meet with each police chief or police captain in the city to bring some closing until why Tootie was up here, voicing his opinion. And if we don't get together with the New Orleans Police Department, and a man, and you guys, all this is in vain, Tootie die in vain if we don't get together as a whole and try to stop some of the tragedy by our police department on the New Orleans Mardi Gras Indians on Super Sunday, and Mardi Gras Day. We have to stop it. Thank you for your time. And once again, we send letters out to consulated- And once again, we send letters out to Council Lady Clausen, three letters, I believe. And we still waiting on a response from your-
I responded. I beg your pardon, sir. I did-
You did?
Yes, I did respond.
Who did you-
And I, I was told I had to refer that to, and I, Elaine White is, is she, I don't think she's here right now, because I sent her, my chief of staff, but-
Let's, okay, I don't, I don't want to-
No, excuse me, Ms. Morell, I'm answering this.
No, no, you can't-
I am answering this.
All right.
Yes, I did respond. This is very dear to me. Tootie Montana was a personal friend of mine. You can ask his wife Joyce, because when he dropped dead in this chamber, I was sitting here.
So was I.
I, I know, sir, but I was too. And I was here on this side of the dais. I went to their home the next morning, and I was never so honored in all my life to see my picture in their home. That's how good a friend I was of his and Joyce's. Excuse me, I didn't act like that when you were speaking, sir.
No, ma'am, somebody pulled my head.
My point being is, I would have responded to that letter because of, not only because it's what I do, I am very good about that. My staff is very good about it. I'm not very good, my staff. But I love Tootie Montana. I would never have let- I do agree, we need to go back to the issue. But I cannot, I cannot go back to that issue. That is not my district. That is not my purview. I was told to refer, I went to, I referred to it, I referred it to, whether it was Commissioner Carter, I'm almost positive, excuse me. Commissioner Carter is the one who will be heading up decisions like that now under this administration, working jointly with all of the first responders and the criminal justice meeting and a whole criminal justice coordinating committee. And that's where it has to go if we're going to do it right, sir. One person like me can't make that decision. I was the district council person where the problem was when Tootie came here to testify. I take that very seriously. I was trying to solve it as one person, and it didn't work, it wasn't working. So I took it to a higher level. We now have a commissioner, Councilman James, former Councilman James Carter, who is the commissioner of criminal justice, who is going to coordinate all of the parties, the administration, the council, and the criminal justice components, including the police, so we do it right. And I'm almost positive that's where I referred it. I don't want to put it on, but I don't want to say that if I didn't and put Councilman, I mean Commissioner Carter in, in a box here. That's not my intention. But I did send it where I was told it should go. And I did respond to you saying I would do that. I have a file, sir, and I will get it for you later when my chief of staff returns.
Okay, we appreciate it. But the reason why we forwarded this letter to you and we haven't got a response because you are our city councilor-at-large. And we thought it was appropriate to send it to our city council-at-large because it's a city-wide problem, not this, a district problem. This is why we forwarded the letter to you, and we still waiting on a response from this letter. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. And at this point, we're going to continue with the Tootie Montana. I'm going to turn it over to Darryl, because, you know, I was talking to Councilman Johnson, and I will get together with you guys and set up a meeting with Councilman Johnson and I, and we will try to get this conversation going, because I think it's-
Could I also be included in that?
Yes, anyone that's interested can.
Can I say something? James Carter, former councilmember James Carter, who is the, I guess, the commissioner, grew up in this culture. And I believe that informing, bringing the groups together with you, Councilmember Johnson, Councilmember Palmer, all of the councilmembers, because it is, it impacts the entire city, that a comprehensive plan of action can be-
Easily put together.
Easily put in place.
Not rocket science.
So that we don't have to revisit this issue every year.
Well, I think the thing about it is, I just don't want us, and I don't want to take away from this, but I want to stay focused on honoring him today. I also, excuse me, I want to focus on going forward, because I think the thing that we want to do is learn from mistakes. And I think the Queen eloquently said it when she said that we need to understand this culture and why it's necessary that the chief has the ability to go the direction that the chief wants to go, and that there is a respect, not only at looking at the pretty costumes, but a respect of the time and energy that goes into developing it. But I think the best thing to do is you have to understand the sense of family that goes with that, because I know that Ms. Joyce and his daughter, and I know Darryl, and, and all people that are involved with, with this, spend hours assisting. So when we talk about finding alternative things for children to do to keep them off the street, we have alternatives that are part of our culture that in the, in years gone by, were part of the reason that we were able to have this sense of community. So moving forward, I'm committed, and I know John is committed, and Kristen's committed. So we'll start, we'll be the jump off. And then we'll figure out who else needs to come to the table, and we'll have this conversation going. And I promise this to Darryl and Ms. Joyce, because I think you're right. I, I want us to celebrate Mr. Tootie, but it is very important that before we move forward with the celebration, we have to remember that we haven't really resolved the problem that brought him to this chamber. So, Darryl?
I just want to say this. Prior to Katrina, I worked at a school, New Orleans Charter Middle School.
Get the mic, Darryl.
As I was saying, prior to Katrina, I was working at a school called New Orleans Charter Middle School. I was teaching the kids how to do the beadwork. I had the kids making the miniature Indian dolls. One of the young ladies at the school sold her doll to a teacher who was from North or South Carolina, where she bought it for her mom as a Christmas gift. And the young lady was pulling on my shirt that day. I said, "Girl, why you keep pulling on me?" She was so excited. She said, "Chief, I'm rich." I said, "What you talking about?" She said, "I sold my doll." For me to be able to share something with an 11-year-old kid that made something with her hands, where she was able to earn an honest dollar, I've been on a mission. My mission is, is economic development within our culture. I know I've taught over 3,000 kids. Also, I've taught some senior citizens as well how to make the dolls. The senior citizens are on a fixed income. Make the dolls, they'll be able to supplement that check they get once a month to help them with their, their medication bills or whatever. The young kids, if I don't get the kids, you know who going to wind up getting them? The dope dealers. So that's been the mission that I've been on as a Mardi Gras Indian, trying to teach the kids, keep them off the street, keep them positive. Had another young lady from the school, she's now in college, pass my house one day. She finally got brave enough to stop and pull over. And she came, and you know what she told me? She said, "Chief, you know when I was in your class? That was the best years of my life." Touch me to my heart. So I'm saying, there's nothing negative about Mardi Gras Indians. You really got to get a chance to know it, to really fully understand where I'm coming from. Having said that, we would like to sing "Indian Red," if it's all right with the council.
Thank you. And we'll bring this presentation to a close with this. Thank you, Darryl.
We are from the nation of all our creation. Don't you hear we calling? Talk with, talk with calling. Oh, my Indian red. Oh, I hear them say.
Excuse me, councilwoman, city council? Excuse me, one, one second, please. With all due respect to the Allison family and Big Chief Tootie Montana, my name is Dow Michael Edwards. I'm the spy boy for the Mohawk Hunters. I just want to tell you all that there is a sense of urgency to having this dialogue go on. Last year during Mardi Gras, there were three Indian tribes-
Okay, I'm going to let everyone come up and talk. So you will get your chance if you turned in a card. You don't talk on orders of business? Okay.
Don't have public comment on orders of business, no vote is taken. I'm sorry, sir. Look, I couldn't agree with you more, but we're already an hour past due, and I'm keeping a very favorite mayor waiting for his turn at this table.
And sir, and sir, we, we, I'm open. We have a committee meeting that we can have this conversation at. So if you just come around, we'll talk.
I will, I will make sure that everyone that turned in a card is contacted by my office, so that when we have the meeting, that you can come to the meeting, and we can talk, and you will have your time, chance to talk. And I think the other thing is that we need, is that governmental affairs you going to refer this to? We're going to refer this issue to a committee meeting where we can put time to specifically deal with the issue.
Yes.
And have time where you're not, where we can have this dialogue. So we'll notify you when the January governmental affairs meeting is going to be.
It, it'll be February 6th.
And Ms. Guidry has said she will put it.
If you get with my staff, we'll, we'll get your names.
I'll give her the cards.
And sir, this is, this is in the rules, that we don't do-
10 a.m.
I'm sorry.
I apologize.
And this was supposed to be 15 minutes, but because it was so phenomenal, we let it go on and on.
As long as we get it to us before Mardi Gras, that's-
And I promise you, I did answer that letter and did refer it on, and we will, we will reinstate all this. Thank you. We'd now like to invite Mayor Sidney Bartholomew and one of the best first ladies in the nation, his wife, Mickey Bartholomew, to the table, please. Good morning.
Good morning, councilwoman.
Mr. Mayor and Mrs. First Lady, Sidney and Mickey Bartholomew.